In the one box. In my office.
Well, while she's doing that, I can. There's three types of raises. It doesn't mean everybody gets all three. I'm just going to explain them. First one is the cost of living, and that's usually commensurate inflation. Second was a step increase. Also, the employees get a step increase as long as they're under the maximum. Once they reach the maximum for that range, they're in a particular position, they don't get enough, they don't get a step increase again. Obviously, employees that have, or you know, maybe five years or less on your job, get step increases up until that time when they reach the max, which varies depending on when they came in. Some employees start above the minimum, others, most employees, I think, start above. Then you have a merit increase.
We don't have a cap to the step increase.
Or? Yes, 3%.
No, I mean, like city employees can max out and never, never get a step increase when they hit the top, which is what you just said. But the attorney and the city managers, is there a top?
They're different. There, there's, no, there's no top.
That's, that's what I'm confirming, but there isn't a top for them.
This is always 3%. Now, last year.
All right, you are back.
Okay?
Yes.
Thank you. You can, you guys stay?
Yes, I'll go too. I will need to go into a meeting, yes.
All right, open the meeting. Meeting's, uh, the meeting is hereby open. Okay, last year, Matthew and Jonathan both got a COLA increase of 7%. That was what the cost of living was. There's also another category called other exempt. That's all the other city employees that are not in the union, like all the supervisors, like all the department directors are considered other exempt. Now, remember too, that last year we went through our company has some salary. Or the average non-exempt, or excuse me, other, the average exempt employee also got 7%. That's a COLA.
Oh, it was last year.
Last year. Okay, last year, they both got 3% step increase. They're both, you know, pretty much in their first or second year, so that's kind of normal with, um, city procedures. Other exempt also got those that were, again, below the maximum, got a 3% step increase. Merit increase? I believe they both got a 2.5% merit.
You're on a ride.
So when you add it all together, they've both got 12.5% increase.
Yeah, so they've needed a raise for two years.
And so did the other exempt employees. Well, that's strong. Okay, now we gotta deal with this year 24, 25. For whatever it's worth, I know that the COLA is 3.3%. I'm gonna put that down here because that's what the non-ex, that's what the exempt employees are getting. 3.3. Some employees are also getting a step increase if they're eligible. If they're at the top of the range, they don't get it. Those that are below, get a, get a 3% merit. You may be asking.
Not as merit.
I'm sorry, step increase.
Yes.
How many of the city employees are at the top of the range and don't get a step increase? I think, I think it's fair, that's about, don't quote me, I think, at least about half. Merit?
That's to be argued.
Other exempt employees, none of them are getting a merit increase, that's my understanding. So the question is, we gotta fill in these three blanks.
Just do it like you just did.
Yeah. I think that's a lot. Heard what they got last year, my gosh.
Well, last year, the big difference was this.
Yes, I know.
And we, that was, the COLA was commensurate with the, right, what's that called? City and I.
Yeah.
So COLA aside, they really got a 5.5%, like a 5.5% sort of voluntary on our part increase plus the COLA.
Right. I think the step increase, the 3% is a recognition that they're toward the bottom of the, because they're only getting a one in two years. So if you go like this, they get what everybody else got here, what everybody else, of course, they're, they're still eligible. That person with 6.3, so to me, the big question is, to what extent do you think they, you know, we can talk about those two numbers? But the, I think the big things would be the merit increase and, um, they both got sterling evaluations. So. I was a small businessman with a small office and a small number of employees. We're not, that's, that's a lot right there, 6, 6.3. I'm not looking at, giving any additional, that's enough, after what they got last year. Seven plus, two and a half plus.
Well, and I haven't looked at it. Maybe you want to look at this and see if it compares. Pretty much in the middle.
The middle?
Yeah. Uh, like Pendleton lower, Canby is higher. Good River is higher, but not, you know, not by much to me, and YH is 168, 162. Jonathan's is higher than most city attorneys than comparatively. So. But given that's this good performance appraisal, I think, maybe give it zero.
For merit?
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree with that.
So what's the maximum? We could, I mean, we can afford it, but all the way out to back with uh, just a marginal increase would be okay. Well, if it's 6, 6.3, let's go up to seven.
That's a 0.7% increase on merit.
I would, I would consider that. Did we, refresh my memory, did we break it out to them last time, like, here's the percent of COLA, and here's the percent of step? Did we just say, here's the total percent? There was also some discussion about how much of that merit, remember that, because Jonathan, or because Matthew was talking about, missed out, the timing of it being hard as you versus.
So was Jonathan. And we could solve that issue.
We also said that by denying his request, that we would look at it in the budget and in the evaluation for Jonathan. So, but then. You saw what that, uh, testing. Yes. But to differentiate between Matthew and Jonathan, I don't know, I'm, I'm looking for a, a small number, but yet not just zero. 0.7, would you bring him up to? So what? That was a 0.3.
They bring up.
To merit.
0.7 would bring him up to a 7%.
I call it, that whole aside, step is automatic, right?
Well, it depends on where you work. Cities I've worked in, it's not, it's, it's, uh, if you get a bad evaluation, you don't get a step increase. But that's, I think, that's not the norm, I tell you. It's, well, cities, it's pretty obvious.
Most cities is.
As long as they're at the, they're out, as long as they're not at the maximum.
Right, understood.
Well, we want to be competitive, and we are, and we want to be fair. And we want to reward merits.
And replacing, placement costs is really hard to gauge, but isn't very difficult to hire in almost all professions, right?
If you had to pay, if we had to replace Matthew, I guarantee you, we'd make one of them.
I don't know, but I've talked to anybody in any profession without a jab or flesh with people. It's like, everything's tight. So I just think about that, we have, yeah, it's a lot of money, so we do need to be mindful. On the other hand, we have two, I think, pretty excellent, pretty high performing staff that are running our, our, our organization. We do need to recognize that statement.
All right, let's throw a number off for merit, because I think we're, for COLA and step, I think we're locked in. Would we all agree with that? Then what we have to do is just debate merit, and what would be fair compensation for outstanding performance.
And I think two big factors there are the value, the quality of their evaluation and the, um, competition out there, the market.
So what is your recommendation? What would you, based on?
I was gonna say one and a half, but I, I think that's not gonna fly, so.
No, tell us what you think. Don't tell us what you think we think.
I think, I would go, I, I would go for one and a half myself, that's my.
And based on a comparison.
Evaluation, based, I just got this thing not Good River, there's no way.
I, I saw that too, there's generally a lot of them.
Not that happy, because we have.
That's why they're always in bankruptcies.
Not only in the Hudson County, so many of the rivers flushed for years through all of the.
That's because of that damn bridge. No, it's the port. I'm divorced, I just, I like.
You're right, the county is, I don't think the city is.
Shouldn't they just have to hire a new city manager?
In about two years.
Yeah, I'm right. One and a half, does that, does that seem reasonable? Is that within our, is, first of all, it's in our budget?
I mean, we, we also are flush, but we don't need to spend it all.
Yeah, that should be, that should be wrong.
Yeah, just left.
Yeah.
Even if it were tight, I would want a little merit increase because they've done so much. So I think one and a half is, I can live with that. A 1.7 is just to give a good even number, but it seems like a small increase for merit, so one and a half would be. That's acceptable to me.
I just always struggle, maybe with the formula of how the city works, because also someone who got employees and then, of course, who's been an employee in many years, and I'm thinking about the people that are paying taxes right now and they're not getting increases, even though, you know, they certainly didn't get 7% COLA last year, and, you know, I, that's what I struggle with, is that we give such overall large raises on very large salaries when other people don't have that luxury.
When unionized employees have power and do better than, not, they negotiate compensation for themselves, and that thrives, are non-unionized but at the top of the pyramid folks.
I, I agree.
There's a lot of stuff that's not in that either that we give.
I agree with that logic, except when it comes down to being competitive, comparative, or being able to compete. You have to keep the wages up to a level, so you have to do incremental. The times when you get in trouble is when you don't do anything, and then all of a sudden you do a large one, and that's when the, the public comes back, and that's when we get hit with the negative comments. So I would, I would incremental merit pay, I'm, I'm thinking 1.5 is fair.
I think Darcy makes a really good point about the public, but, you know, you're right, citizens of this community.
Yeah, yes.
They're not used to getting 12.5% raises.
No, I, 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 when we say we're saying pass.
We made an effort last year to bring salaries up for a reason, and that's why, one of the reasons they got 12.5 is because we reorganized.
We had to be a little bit.
Yeah.
And, and I agree with that. Here, if we didn't have the 12.5%, ever the, would we have as much, how would we be feeling about this?
My attitude would change.
That's, that's a lot. I mean, that's a big lump. It was a big lump last year, so.
Well, it was their first year, and we, I don't know, speaking for myself, I thought that we, as a group, wanted to let them know that we appreciated their short performance, and we want to keep them here.
Yeah, that's true too, and we would like to keep these two people in our city.
Having a name?
No, well, yeah, I'd like, absolutely, but Jonathan and, and, well, actually, the judge as well.
Yeah.
You know, all three of those are exemplary people, want to keep them. I don't know, the city right now, with the people that has been hired, or have been hired, is, I think it's at the top of the game right now. I think we've got some of the best employees, the city is doing very well. So I think we have to, zero is not, um, I don't think it's on the tape. What is the paramount? One of my, one and a half percent. Do we need a vote? Do we need consensus? What do we need to do?
Well, this is an open meeting, right? It's awkward, if I'm the one who's gonna communicate the decision to the council, my style is not to mention names or to say the vote was three to two, it was a consensus, but this is an open meeting, this public meeting, I'm not sure I'd be able to hide it. I have no intention of going to either one of them and naming names or anything like that. I like to hope it's a group, a group decision, so I don't, we don't have to get into, you know.
Well. I'd have to just say the council's decision was X, you don't have to say.
Right, but then you go, this is the tape.
Well, you know what? Sausage acts to get made, and they're gonna look at it, and then they're gonna see it clearly. Trust those two to have a certain amount of wisdom, if they appear into it, they know what they're looking for.
Merit increases are other city employees getting, like, what's a typical?
They're getting, they're not getting one. The other exempt employees are not getting one. With the exempt, uh, very. Department heads, uh, city level supervisors, everybody who's not in the unions and who's not Jonathan and Matthew.
Right, so that's the department heads and some other supervisors.
But isn't like codes enforcement not part of the union, and what about?
He's about the floor too.
Yeah, so.
So are those determined, those are determined individually or across the board?
I didn't realize that.
Well, it's across the board, but it's, I think it's something we're voting on, part of the budget. I think it's, is it on the agenda for the raises for exempt employees?
It was on the consent agenda last night.
That's right. That's right. And we voted.
Yes, for the COLA. For the, off the living.
And the step, okay, just the COLA, that's right. So we didn't vote on step increases or, so the zero, I've been told, is what's going in the budget, so.
Well, couldn't we try our decision to add?
Well, then you'd give us zero merit.
It only seems fair that if you're exempt, employees and your management should be, in my opinion, along with.
Right.
But we're, as, as we talked about, we should be specific to employees. And we don't evaluate the other ones, we don't, other than those next one.
So there is a possibility that, uh, in the budget cycle, that the merit pay could be increased.
I'm not sure of that.
We also adjust, we also did a complete salary evaluation and bumped almost everybody, I think, I'm trying to remember if there are any exceptions, upward, and some people considerably upward, that's true, and I'm sorry, but at some point, you, we have for good jobs, we have a good salary, lots of people, and I'm just, and people have to be okay with that. And I, and we're not in a position to evaluate each other personally, that's why we have a manager. We evaluate with the manager, and he's got to run the ship.
Right, but we're not saying that when he evaluated them, that they didn't follow by our merit increase, they probably got good evaluations too, just nobody is getting a merit increase regardless of how good their evaluation was.
Well, keep in, keep in mind too, that a lot of those happy employees didn't get a step increase either, they just got the COLA.
Because they're maxed out.
Because they're maxed out.
Not because they're triggered by.
Correct.
All right. I'm, I'm more for tying it to all exempt and management, to be fair.
Or you could compromise, make it a 1.1.0.
I guess I don't quite understand. Are we certain about this, that there's this policy being proposed? Either as a policy this year, or I guess through the budget, that no merit increases are to be given?
That's what I was told.
Because that seems sort of critical. If that's the case, then I don't feel right about giving merit.
Me neither.
But we don't actually know that, that, that I'm not being, I support the one in that person.
Well, you have to make a decision. What is it gonna be?
I still think a merit increase, some merit increases reasonable.
And also, if there's nothing proposed, it would have to be negotiated, right, that can be changed, but I can wait until Monday and pass a change made that way.
The council sets, I mean, the city council could do whatever they wanted, and that's what it's gonna be, that's all.
What do you think?
I think we have to put something on merit, just, you know, because this side job here doesn't bother any of the employees, two employees we want to keep, they keep happening, they're important to us, and give them good evaluations. It would be good to have clarity on this other point, but maybe that, yeah, the budget process. Yeah, so, the budget process, if you feel like we need to match.
Overall, do they be there?
Yeah.
So we can make that happen, if it's a priority that we, so we have to just, we have to set a, a level. Rock, what do you think?
It's just the two, it's not across the board, or it is across the board?
No, it's just the two.
So what do you mean across the board? I'm not supposed to, do we have merit across the board or something? Well, I'm, I'm tied into that.
Other exempts don't argue, arguing anything, this is what we know.
The other exempt are zero. Yes, merit.
Merit.
I don't know, 6.3 is a pretty good increase anyway. One? 1%? Is that what you're suggesting?
Or a dollar, or whatever. 1%. I didn't know. I've never read this kind of stuff. It didn't even have benefits. All my kids are working hard, 10:00 at night, paid for both my kids. No help, it's all about it.
How many of you would go for a 1% merit?
I'd go with the 10. What, what do you, one and a half?
Okay.
What do you, are you at zero? Here's a pile, we got four ones, somebody make a motion.
I can't.
Somebody, we're talking overall increase of 7.8 versus 7.3.
Somebody that's gonna be here, raise a motion, add the second, that's what I'm talking.
Where'd you say about seven?
For the, the overall, for the duration. He says, like me, if we gave him the one and a half versus 7.3, he'll give just one.
Oh, yeah, right.
So it's, I mean, overall, it's not gonna be.
Well, I, I don't think it's a money factor at all, I think it's a, it's a, you're making a statement.
Exactly, it's gonna be a political statement.
My statement is, it is the same as other exempt employees, the people in that.
Well, if anybody want to make a motion, we have a one and a half, we've got three ones, then a zero, that's the way I see it. Am I reading that well?
Well, I heard four, four one and halves.
We would, I thought you said one.
I, I thought it was a man, one and a half, one and a half?
One.
One.
I agree, one and a half, actually. Well, as I've said, there's some clarity to be gained, some further conversation with the other exempt employees, but we don't resolve that tonight. We can resolve the other salaries tonight.
I'll make a motion that we give a merit increase equal to the amount of the other exempt employees to the city management.
Is there a second?
Say it again.
That we offer a merit increase equal to that of the other exempt employees.
Which is zero.
We believe it is zero, we are not 100% sure. If we are wrong, then I think the city manager and the city attorney deserve the same merit increase. Whether that's zero or.
Whatever the one is.
2.5.
I see the logic here in what you're saying. I just, just the coherence to it. I don't think I.
So I made a motion, is there, if there's a, and it dies, and there's a second, you can have discussion.
Well.
Is there a second to the motion? Okay, does anybody else want to make a motion?
I'm looking at, I'm looking at about increase for merit, merit increase for 1.5.
Amy, are you taking notes?
I'm recording.
Okay. Okay. Motion is one and a half on merit.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded, then you just got, any more discussion?
Like, there's clarity beginning, as I've said, at least too many times now, sorry it's late. But I think that's, I, I want it uncoupled from this vote, this is, at least for me, this is the evaluation we have before this. I want some answer on that other, and then maybe need to be some action there, but this is what we get to decide on.
Matthew's in his office writing, I'll be walking in right now, just to make, make sure it's zero.
That would be helpful.
We have also often have, um, this discussion and made the motion in a regularly scheduled city council meeting. Even though this is a public meeting.
Well, hey, we can do that, or I could be able to tell those guys, I you know, what the decision is.
I'd, I'd like to be here for Matthew, since we're here, a few extra minutes.
Okay, a few real, yeah. Obviously, because I can.
You want me to, you don't want to grace that? Are you, Rich, are you bringing them in here, or are you just chatting with them?
I'm just gonna go talk unless you want, unless you want. You want me to bring them in?
No, to determine is zero, but in the budget.
However, during the budget process, we can go back and set priority, that's one of those things that we wouldn't mix having. We can, we can't guarantee, but we could sure move towards that direction, so there's some equality, some equity.
I feel like there's some other pieces to the, the equation, some variables that we don't have in front of this. Still assess this with merit on the.
We got more than I don't.
But I think, yeah, I think the budget process is where we make up that difference with the being zero or. I know we passed here, I think.
Robert, come here. Yeah, I think that.
You can.
I don't know, it's a totally lie, I mean, work form.
Yeah. So we only have to vote in two minutes or something? Yeah, we're not supposed to go past eight o'clock.
Eight o'clock.
Eight o'clock, so one violation.
Our, violation of our.
All this meeting is still void.
Start over.
I, I realize that, I gotta find a place to sleep.
Oh, I told you, the best first. There's a must, there's a queen bed down there, there's a double, there's a single, you take your choice. Find a other night.
We need to do the morning.
Five.
Merit is definitely zero, however, it did point out that some employees do get certain stipends, for, for example, Spanish speaking employees get extra money. Special skill, it's good extra money. He also, it's also in his contract, that he doesn't, the contract doesn't say he gets a merit. The contract does say that he's eligible for merit, so it's hard to say. The contract does say that he's eligible for merit, so it's our decision. Nothing really has changed since I left you.
He's okay with a zero increase.
Did the other?
I didn't ask him what it was okay with.
Did the other exempt employees ever get a merit? Or are they just?
They got one last year. Two and a half percent.
Maybe we bypass one year, work towards getting an increase in the budget process.
I feel like this is a figureation that we resolve at this moment, that needs to be resolved, but, you know, some of these guys have been in conflict, that's just fine. I don't necessarily want it that tightly with. So seriously, like.
Well, I've got a motion on the, on the, on the floor, and we have, uh, this is the debate.
We have a motion and a second for one and a half percent.
Yeah. For one and a half percent in merit.
Ready to take a vote?
Yeah, let's do it.
All those in favor of a merit of one and a half percent for those two guys, say aye.
Aye.
Fused?
Aye.
So it's four to one. Okay?
Actually, I didn't vote, it's too quick.
All right, so let's have a vote, a real count here, where are you? So we've got three and a one, where are you, Rob?
I'm gonna go with the three to two.
Yes, we're all happy. Okay. You know, I think that goes on the same, but I don't explain them as nothing. I think the big issue here is that there's some of the other.
It is, yeah, the issue, yeah.
So, okay, um, you guys wanna bring this up in a real public meeting, or is this okay?
This is a public meeting, isn't it? It's not.
Okay.
Increase will still stay.
It'll be reflected in the events of this meeting.
Yeah, I can make a part of that report.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Great. This concludes our three hour, five minute, thank you all very much.
I'll send them all up, I don't know why you're not getting those.